Recording in progress.
Okay, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, January 24th meeting of the Cupertino Planning Commission. This will be a teleconference meeting with public participation to help stop the spread of COVID-19. Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Capil.
Uh, present.
Commissioner Saxana. Commissioner Wong.
Aye, present.
Vice Chair Marty Potla.
Yes.
And Chair Sharp.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, okay. Our first item of business will be the approval of the minutes from the December 13th Planning Commission. So if everyone could take a minute to look those over, and then we'll take a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I will second that. Um, but, oh, also before we do that, is there, are there any public comments on the minutes? Let me, um, let me go to participants, one second.
Chair, if I may just interrupt for one quick second to know that Commissioner Saxana joined us.
Oh, great, okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I had some problems logging in, it's finally resolved.
Okay, I don't see it, there's three participants that, uh, show up and I don't see any of them raising their hands to comment on the minutes, I mean, attendees. So we can have a roll call vote on the minutes.
Commissioner Capil.
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Saxana. Commissioner Saxana, you're on mute.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wong?
Aye.
Vice Chair Marty Potla?
Yes.
And Chair Sharp?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now we are on to the portion of the meeting for oral communications, there, well, first there's no post-arguments. And this part of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter that A is within the jurisdiction of the commission and B is not on the agenda. Each speaker will get three minutes. And in most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. So, so far, I see one hand raised, that is Jennifer, welcome Jennifer.
Uh, thank you, um, Chair Sharp, hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin and, um, I just wanted to throw something out here, um, the federal government right now is not declaring Santa Clara County a disaster area to make it eligible for FEMA. Santa Cruz County, San Benito County, Monterey County, I believe San Mateo County have all been declared disaster areas, um. And I want to throw out something here, people may not be aware, but the Los Gatos border goes up to the summit on Highway 17. And that is all in Santa Clara County. That area is a complete disaster zone. Highway 17 has had repeated potholes, in fact, one of them's called Potzilla, has its own Facebook page. I almost fell into them two times in the last two weeks. You take your life into your hands if you're going to drive out of Los Gatos, even lark down up to Lexington to the summit, Bear Creek Road, we had a neighbor that got lost up there because he owns property. He followed, he thought there was a road that was open going toward the summit. It was closed, the sign was wrong, he had to backtrack. I, I challenge our government to realize that there are parts of Santa Clara County, and I would imagine there's parts of South San Jose where there was flooding, um, what about the Alma Bowl? I, I really think Santa Clara County should be listed as a recipient of FEMA, I believe that the governor wants it. But for some reason, the federal government isn't it. I know, I have lived it, I almost wrecked my car in the ever-growing Potzilla. And I, and I, I've been saying this again and again, nobody spends any money on Highway 17 through Lexington. And if you look, Lexington is full by the way, and it's the, and it's overflowing, which is fine. But if, if people look at the number of accidents and fatalities in that area, the mudslides. I, I am absolutely dumbfounded that our county is not working with Santa Cruz County to try to fix this area. Um, Los Gatos, I know, has had its challenges because my brother, uh, lives there. He has a rental home now. But it is one of those situations where the volume of traffic going over there, I had to sit in the middle of the pothole area, it was raining so hard that the potholes were reopening after Caltrans filled them up. We need to have a solution to this, and my, I see no reason why Santa Clara County is not deserved, declared a FEMA recipient. Um, yeah, okay, well, maybe, maybe the president needs to come back and check 17, thank you.
Okay, thank you Jennifer, um, I just would point out, I would encourage you to contact your county supervisor since, um, that's not within our jurisdiction of the planning commission. Uh, okay, don't see any other hands raised? Um, okay, without any hands raised, I will close oral communications. Uh, do we have any written communications? Nope, Sarah or you, no, okay.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, and there's no consent calendar? Okay, so we are on to item two, which is a public hearing to consider appeal, an appeal of conditions of approval, number 16 grading and construction hours and noise limits of the director of community developments approval of two, two-story permits to allow two new two-story residences on adjacent properties. Applications are 2022-015 and 016. The applicant is Mike Chen, the property owner is Tracy Su. Um, the appellant are James Quinn at 11226 Bug Road, Assessor Parcel Number 36206036. And maybe we have a staff report, please?
Um, sure, uh, I would like to introduce, um, Emmy Sugiyama, who will be, uh, presenting the staff report for this item, sir. Emmy?
Right, welcome Emmy.
All right, thank you Chair Sharp and Commissioners, Emmy Sugiyama, planning staff, and I'm here today to discuss the appeal of two two-story permits, that's R1, or 2022-015 and R2022-016. So the project is located at 11226 Bug Road in the North Monavista neighborhood, and that is within the R1 7.5 zoning district. The surrounding neighborhood is generally made up of a mix of single-story and two-story, uh, single-family residences. As a bit of background, this property was previously subdivided through tentative map 8, 2018-01. Uh, this split the lot into three different lots, lots A and B have permits before you today. And Lot C was recently issued an approval letter and is currently in its appeal period. R22-016 proposes a roughly 4,200 square foot two-story residence and R2022-015, and that's associated with Lot B, proposes a roughly 4,300 square foot two-story residence. Uh, neither of these proposals include either a balcony or an ADU. During the appeal period for both of these permits, staff received an appeal from the neighboring property resident at, uh, 21448 Kersich Place, and that's shown here in yellow. The appeal was made in regards to the allowable construction hours that were outlined in condition 16 of the action letters. The appellant indicated that the allowable construction hours should be moved from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM as a reflection of what's more consistent with the landscaping allowances. The condition that was included in the two original action letters was consistent with Cupertino's municipal code chapter 1048, which allows construction to take place Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, or not holidays, but Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Uh, as for landscaping, it's slightly different with with landscaping activities taking place from Monday through Friday at 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then on Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Staff has reviewed these allowable hours for both construction and landscaping activities and would like to note the key differences between the two types of activities. For construction, it is seasonal and often time-constricted. Uh, it requires the use of a lot of heavy equipment, however, that heavy equipment is used in intervals rather than for an extended period of time. Uh, and it also involves a coordination of a lot of people usually on the construction site. Whereas with landscaping, you typically find that it's more year-round, it can be formed at most times of the day. Um, it also is the sustained use of equipment perhaps for a shorter period of time. And also will only include about one or two people working on a site at a time. So, just as some additional information, the appellant is currently located about 70 feet from the proposed construction site. And the appellant will also be receiving as condition, or as required by Title 17 of the city's municipal code, a notice of construction and dust control, which basically outlines, uh, how long the construction is expected to take, as well as the different machines that may be in use during that time. And it will also list a contact for any complaints related to, uh, noise or dust that may be occurring during the time of construction. So with all that, staff is recommending that you adopt the resolution as shown as attachment one, which denies the appeal and upholds the director's decision, uh, to approve both of these applications. All right, and that is all for my presentation.
Okay, very good, um, let's see, so do we have the appellant here, would the appellant like to speak and then the, um, and then Mr. Chen, then the applicant?
Yes, Chair, we do have the appellant here, Mr. Quinn is the appellant.
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Quinn, uh, you can unmute yourself and you, you can speak. Okay, we can hear you.
Okay. Most of my words would be, uh, the same as, uh, Emmy's words. Uh, except most of the 10 houses on, on this cul-de-sac are people that are retired. And we don't, we don't like the 7:00, 7:00, 7:00 AM start time. I agree with her that there, maybe it isn't consistent all the way through the probably year or more construction at 7:00 AM, but still, it, I think it's inconsiderate to think that 7:00 AM is a starting time. Uh, you could, I could see it at a commercial site, like at, uh, uh, 85 and, uh, and, uh, Stevens Creek, you know, that, the new construction there. Uh, that's a bit different, but this is a, this is a small little area and, uh, the proximity to our houses is very close, on Lot C. And that's about all I have to say.
Okay, very good, thank you, and, um, now, Mr. Chen, would you like to speak? Is Michael Chen here? Is anyone here for, is the applicant here?
Uh, yes, sir, we do, we have, uh, Tracy Su, who is the, um, was also.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah, okay, okay, welcome Tracy, um, go ahead.
Okay.
You need to unmute though.
Yes, I just unmute, okay. So basically here is, um, um, I think if you look at the city, the garbage pickup time also start at 7 o'clock. So, uh, some businesses that did start 7, okay? And during construction, there is, uh, particularly in the very beginning, like for example, foundation, and that required, uh, very heavy equipment or, you know, like, uh, concrete, uh, trucking vehicle here. Uh, personally, I think that it's better start early, I know it noisy, but you will, uh, block the traffic here, have a less traffic. So, um, I support, uh, I mean, start at 7 o'clock, keep it the existing ordinance.
Okay, is that all?
Um, yeah.
Okay, let's go to see if any member of the public would like to speak on this. Um, I see Jennifer Griffin, welcome Jennifer. Go ahead. Jennifer, go ahead, oh, I, oh, okay, there you go, okay.
We're trying, okay. Thank you, um, yes, I just had a couple of comments and a question. I was wondering how close the new house is going to be to Mr. Quinn's property and whether his bedrooms are against the construction side of the house. I will tell you, um, that one of the issues with home construction, because I've had in my neighborhood, we have very small lots and we've had, I had a large home built next to me that took over a year to build. I was working swing shift at the time, I got home at 1:00 AM. Um, we were in the county then, but I, my sleep was interrupted as of, you know, I was awake by 7, 7 o'clock or 8:00 AM, et cetera, and I didn't go back to sleep again. Um, one of the main problems with this is the, I, I don't think it's called a compressor, but it's the unit that they use to provide electricity for the um, pneumatic, um, nail drivers and stuff like that, that thing kept going on and off and on and off. I think it's the electric compressor or something. That thing went 24, it, it was, it was like hearing a, a lung breathing continuously. And it was right against my back with area. Um, it, it, it can take up to a year to have the homes constructed, I can understand that completely, but I think especially now with people working from home, you guys might want to think about, okay, the 7:00 AM, I thought it was actually 8:00 AM, it was start time and then the weekend was 9. But, you know, I, it looks like I'm wrong, I think that in this case, 7:30 might be a better time to start this because the construction workers, you know, that the property owner is not there all the time, obviously, and the architect isn't, et cetera. But it, it can be very, very noisy, um, if you have, if, if, the other thing I'm concerned about is with the houses that close, if you have someone running a nail gun with pneumatic, that is what drives, that's, that's where your ears go, if you have a baby that's trying to sleep. I, I understand that if seniors, um, it's very, very difficult for them, and I, I think in this case, because the homes are so close together, 7:30 might be a good compromise. It's going to take at least six to nine months for this to be built, plus you have the noise from the other two large homes. These are huge homes, 4,000 square feet. It's going to be a lot of noise, I've had two homes built a kitty corner to me and we could hear them too, and they're, and they're big, 3,000 square feet, so I, I understand that this is an issue for the builder, I completely understand you want to get your home built, but there are three big homes going in there.
You're out of time, okay. Um, okay, I don't see any other hands raised, so we can bring this back to the commission, uh, who would like to speak on this?
Uh, Chair, if I could interrupt, I apologize.
Sure, I'm sorry.
Yeah, give me one to, uh, invite the applicant or the, um, uh, appellant to, if they have any responses.
Oh, okay, sure, that's a good idea. Uh, okay, yeah, so, Mr. Quinn, is that, um, construction back up against your bedroom like, um, Jennifer was asking? You can unmute and speak. If you wish.
It, it does not back up directly to my side, but it is, but it's close to it.
Okay, and so from the diagram, it looks like I guess Lot C separates your house from the lots A and B, is that true?
That is true.
Okay, so there's a little, little bit of a buffer there.
Yeah, but it's very little and, uh, it's just, uh, it, I think it's a definite issue, 8 o'clock is not a, is not a big thing, they're getting their tools ready, there's, there's uh, things ready, assembled for the day's construction. Uh, that's, I don't mind having that, but I don't like, uh, the, uh, compressors or the nail guns or those things, or the saws going at, at 7 o'clock or 7:30, I think 8 o'clock is, is very reasonable.
Right, to start making noise, right.
Yeah, I, but, but assembling the, the, uh, construction material for, for the start of, of, uh, a, of, uh, you know, it could, could start at 7 o'clock. That would be no problem at all.
All right, very good, and, um, Tracy, do you want to respond to that?
Okay, one comment I want to say is about, okay, our challenge here is about like pouring the, uh, foundation. The concrete, the plant, they cross at like a 2 o'clock or 3 o'clock. So if we defer, there is no material available for us uh, for pouring the concrete. Yeah, so that's my concern. If we defer, then it means about, okay, the job that we probably can finish in one day, now we split it into two days.
I see, okay, thank you. Okay, let's go back to the commissioners, uh, Commissioner Marty Potla, I see your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you Chair, uh, Sharp, so I have some questions to the staff as well as, you know, question to the, uh, appellant. So, just so that no one understood this correctly, there are no exceptions granted for these projects, right? So in both the projects that, that's been approved, there are no exceptions, everything is in compliance, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, and, um, the construction time is a citywide guideline, right, it's not, like.
That is correct, yes, so the, the, the conditions of approval as presented and prepared are what the city's municipal code requires, allows.
And, and do we get, I, I know there is a lot of homes being built in Cupertino, because Cupertino has homes that are really old and, you know, stuff like that, so every street, you know, there is one or two home that's being built, so do we get a lot of such complaints?
Um, I, I don't necessarily have numbers, uh, Commissioner Marty Potla, but, uh, in general, uh, we get a few, I won't say that we don't get any, but it is, uh, it's not like something that we hear about every day.
Okay, okay, and, and are they pertaining to, like, you know, non-compliant to the hours, like, you know, on the weekends and it's supposed to start at 9 o'clock? Are they starting early, that kind of a thing, or no, or within the compliant hours, no, there are complaints?
Um, it, it's, usually if, if work starts ahead of time, uh, we, I'm aware of somewhere, you know, the construction may have started at 6:00 AM instead of 7:00 AM, for example. Somebody may have just started, you know, nailing something down or anything like that, is what we hear generally.
I, I do remember hearing one such complaint, you know, about the earlier start, you know, in, in the previous hearing, so, okay. And, um, but that has more to do with, you know, starting sooner than, you know, the allowed time, right, so, uh, how does our hours of operation compare to adjacent cities? Like the guidelines that we have? How does it compare to, you know, Saratoga, or, you know, Los Altos, or, you know, Sunnyvale?
So we haven't done, uh, um, a full-on study of the, the different times, but we are very close to what the other cities, uh, allow. Um, I, and, um, there, there, I did want to just, um, uh, address that, you know, there are no other developments that have a, a delayed start time, uh, in our city at this point.
Okay, so, so we haven't done that so far, right, so this will be the first one if we grant.
Correct.
Um, I presume, you know, we have noise level guidelines for construction, right?
Yes, we do.
And, and, and so we don't get complaints about no excessive noise levels and those kind of things, and that's not.
Generally not, no, um, Saratoga allows construction beginning 7:30 AM, Campbell allows, uh, slightly different times, but we're all in the range.
Okay, and I know the applicant said, you know, the impact of, you know, granting this exception, she said, you know, concrete pouring would spill out from one day to two days, and so I, I heard that, that was going to be one of my questions. And I have a question to the appellant. Uh, if he approved this request, you know, it's going to be more of an exception than rule? Because the, and so are there any special circumstances, you know, supporting your exception request? I'm, I'm, I'm trying to see, you know, if there are some extenuating circumstances, you know, that warrants, you know, granting this exception?
No, it's just a general complaint of noise, that, but when Tracy, uh, the builder or the owner of the property mentioned that the, uh, pouring the concrete, that's a minor element to the saws and nail guns and so forth. For the, for the wood construction of the whole building, or, or, or buildings plural. It's, the, 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 the concrete is, is minor.
Okay. Okay, thank you, uh, thank you for, uh, uh, answering the questions, yeah, thank you, I'm done.
Okay, Commissioner Wong?
Hi there, hey, thank you Chair Sharp, uh, yeah, so I, I did go by the site to take a look as well, um, just to get a feel for the property and the proximity. Um, I do have questions for both the appellant as well as the applicant. Um, for the appellant side, uh, you know, just, just from a noise perspective, I, I think, um, has there been any other construction in the neighborhood in the last 15 years where you've been?
Uh, no.
Okay, got it, and then in terms of, you know, uh, I'm not sure where the commission wound up, uh, where my colleagues will end up, uh, but the question is, um, if there are exceptions like concrete pouring, um, and other, um, activities like that, um, you would be okay with making those exceptions if that was something agreed upon between you and the appellant or this commission?
Sure, sure.
So you'd be open to those, okay, kind of curious there. Uh, and then the, the last question I have for you is um, regarding, uh, just regarding your experience with other construction, uh, have you had any other experiences with any construction in the past? With renovations yourself, or?
Yes, I've had my own, I, I remodeled in, uh, 2000. And I know how, I know what it goes on, I know the, the, you know, the tools and the supporting, uh, uh, compressors and, and, uh, nail guns and so forth, and that's, uh, that, that's terrible, you know, I, I went on for a year myself right here and I, I don't want to go through it again.
No, understood, in that renovation, uh, did your construction crews also arrive at 7:00 in the morning as well?
No, they, they, they would be 8:00 or 8:30, if anything.
Okay, all right, good to know, thank you. Um, to the applicant, uh, quick questions for you. Um, are there any other reasons that you would need, um, a construction crew to come in earlier than that 7:00 versus 8:00? Um, this is directed to Tracy. I apologize, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'm mute for myself, uh, I, I think the complaining many probably is on the framing. Because of framing, they use nail gun, and I know the, the, the pressure machine equipment, uh, is, uh, very noisy, okay? But, uh, foundation also, I know, is, that could be noisy too, because of, uh, for compaction and so on, it could be. But, uh, foundation also, I know, is, it could be noisy too, because of, uh, for compaction and so on, it could be noisy. But normally after the framing time, uh, it, it will be better. Because of when we do like insulation, it basically no noise and the painting, no noise at all, okay? So, uh, what I heard here is mainly on, maybe on the framing, which may takes about, about, um, six to eight weeks, uh, time. Yeah, generated the noise, uh.
Okay, um, a question to you. Have you and Mr. Quinn ever had a conversation directly before coming here to appeal?
Yeah, we, you know, we have some conversation regarding our fence. Looks like the fence have fell down to her, uh, to his side. Uh, so in general, I, I think, uh, James's company is for the city ordinance, not particular to, um, this job site. But this job site, um, my understanding is about, uh, lot C is adjacent to his property. But our construction is more on the driveway and his house is on the backside of lot C, which is for landscape area. So it's pretty far away and lot A and B, there is a lot C in between here. So, uh, the impact should be smaller, in my opinion.
Okay, I think my, my comment to you is, is if you two have not talked before about this issue, um, should the ruling go one way or the other? Um, I'm just hoping that you guys have a chance to connect and, and have a conversation, uh, so that, you know, you can make accommodations with each other depending how the ruling goes. Um, so it's, it's, it's useful. I understand from a construction perspective that many times the crews travel far away, um, as far as two hours away, and they do need to get in early and get out early.
Normally.
And that would have an impact, so.
Yeah, um, so normally construction people, they want to leave at around three o'clock.
Yep, keep the traffic.
Far, far side to avoid the traffic. Yeah, they came in early, they left probably five o'clock, they, they, they leave very far away, okay? So travel one or two hour is a very, very common.
Yep, okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Commissioner Kapil, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Wang, if, uh, talking to each other is, is definitely a good idea. Uh, it will resolve a lot of issues which are cannot be addressed by the, um, by the ruling here. Uh, one question I have for the applicant is that, uh, the, does the, the construction company gives you a schedule of the activities during the day? Uh, like what they're gonna do first, second, third, fourth, so on and so forth. And I'm sure they, uh, as you said, that I actually visited your lot and, uh, saw that there is a lot of space in front, which is facing the, the main street, which is not facing James's side. So some of the activity which, uh, requires, uh, uh, any pre-work before the, uh, my, any, uh, noise-making equipments can be churned on and, uh, uh, put in, uh, next to the, the James's house, that can be done in the front of the house, uh, like, uh, where you have a lot of open space and you can actually do that kind of activity. That is possible as long as you know the, the, uh, schedule of the activities during the day. Like what they're gonna do first, second, third, fourth, and you can prioritize for the first hour. It's not a big deal, it's just an hour. Uh, so during that hour, they can, uh, do the activity which is more conducive to, uh, less noise and then start the other one. Is that something, uh, feasible or is that something you thought about it? It's for the Tracy. I think you are muted.
Okay, thank you, uh, I just unmute myself. So you, you, you have very good point. Since we have A, B, C, three lots and C is the one closest to James's home. And maybe we can start like seven o'clock on A and B, which is on a busy street, Bubero already, um. And maybe, uh, do C a bit later. Yeah, because we might have enough work for lot A to B, yeah.
Yeah, because in that case you have no, uh, the conflict in that case, because then you're, uh, not working towards, uh, the James's side. And, uh, uh, so that is, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay, Vikram. I'm muted, Vikram.
Yeah, so, uh, well, I think, um, a bunch of things which I wanted to say have already been raised. Um, I would say, uh, just commenting on this, um, I think the complaint with, uh, Mr. Quinn has, is legitimate in terms of what he's trying to achieve. Uh, it's also would be not very advisable for the city to, uh, change the overall, uh, way of operating unless they're truly extenuating circumstances. Uh, so while I do understand the concerns Mr. Quinn has, um, I think us setting precedence for doing this is probably going to lead a, a lot more, to a lot more complications down the line, because, uh, you know, Mr. Mr. Quinn is very reasonable in terms of asking for eight o'clock. Uh, if you grant that, then somebody will ask for nine o'clock, or somebody asks for ten o'clock. So it's a, there, uh, we will open a Pandora's box there. Um, I think the best way would be for, um, uh, Ms. Xu and her company is to really make sure that Mr. Quinn is taken into confidence in terms of the timing of different things. And, uh, the stuff where, uh, there is true noise, you, you make a true, a serious effort to make sure you don't do it before eight AM. Um, that would be the way, uh, I would lean towards, uh, this thing, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vikram, so I will go now. And, uh, a lot's already been said. I did look while I was, um, waiting, uh, so Campbell is eight AM to five PM and they don't allow Sunday construction at all, from what I see on their website. Saratoga begins at seven thirty AM. And I do agree with Mr. Quinn that there is, should be a difference, I know it's not on our code now, between construction in residential areas, like where he lives, and commercial areas, say like where they're building, um, building the Oak, the New Oaks or Westport and where Vaca will be built. Um, I think another difference that the city may want to take into account is, uh, back when these times were set, the high school started, I believe, at seven thirty AM. And now because the district decided the students need more sleep, the high school starts at eight thirty AM. And so this noise would be going on starting at seven AM, which, uh, you know, I think would be disruptive to people in that area. And, uh, finally, kind of unrelated to this noise, but I was on Bub Road today because I went to look at the property and I noticed a huge truck that's been parked in the bicycle lane, actually for days, with some cones around it. And I just hope when this construction starts, that, um, our code enforcement and sheriff, that we enforce the fact that you cannot park construction equipment in the bike lane. Um, I think that's very important in this area where there's students riding to Kennedy and there's students riding to Montevista, uh, along Bub Road. Um, you know, my feeling is that they should not be running, um, compressors at seven in the morning. Um, you know, pouring concrete is one thing that's only, you know, uh, you know, a week or so, but running compressors for up to a year, starting at seven AM, I think is really disruptive. Um, so, um, I, um, that, that's how I feel on this anyway. And, uh, so thank you for your time and I guess we can.
Chair, you unmute yourself.
I would prefer that someone else make this motion.
If I may, Chair, it sounds like, um, you're closing the, the public hearing?
That's true, I'm sorry, yes, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, uh, thank you, Michael.
So I, I, I think, you know, when commissioners were asking questions, uh, Mr. Quinn was trying to say something and he was on mute.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll reopen it. And Mr. Quinn, did you have something else to say? You need to unmute yourself.
Yes, I, I totally agree with you. Uh, it seems like the, it has, the code should be updated to the, uh, current, uh, times. It's a, it's, it's not, it has, should have provisions for commercial versus residential. And it's, uh, noise restrictions, that's it. And so I think that's, uh, your points are, are, are very good.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, Ray, would you like to make the motion?
Oh, yeah, happy to make the motion, um, let's see, make a motion to, uh, uphold, yeah, uh, make a motion to uphold the director's decision to approve the, denying the appeal and upholding the director's decision to approve the application. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kapil?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Saxena?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
I.
Vice Chair Mahdi Patla?
Yes.
And Chair Sharf?
No.
Motion carries for one zero zero.
Can I make a comment before we close out here?
Yeah, I, I also want to make a comment.
And I, I think, uh, I think in the spirit of this commission, I think we, we, we all believe that it makes sense to work with each other as neighbors, um, before you come here, and, and I think there's an opportunity here. I think we've identified pain points. Uh, one would be, um, use of compressors early in the morning and, uh, the other piece is trying to get workers in at an earlier hour. Uh, Mr. Quinn has generously, um, communicated that he's fine with setup and people getting there on time. He just doesn't want to hear loud noises before eight. And, uh, Ms. Xu, I, I think you understand the limits of construction and, and the timing that you have. And, and we really encourage, uh, neighbors to work with each other. Um, we, as policymakers, I think the ordinance has to stand, even though I, I do side with Mr. Quinn. I do have a neighbor, a really good friend, that is in the middle of construction and seven in the morning, we do hear some crazy sounds, right? And, you know, it's, um, it, it is, it is, it can be a nuisance, especially if you're retired. Um, and so I just, I would just, uh, you know, urge, uh, Ms. Xu and Mr. Quinn to get together, um, come up with a plan. And if you've got framers coming in for the next six to eight weeks, if they can just hold off starting a little bit later, that would help. And, uh, Mr. Quinn, you know, if you understand, like, if you can get her out of your hair quicker and get the construction up faster, uh, that also benefits you. So that's just my two cents.
Did you want to say something, Mooney, and finish up, because this item is?
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, I, 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 I agree with, you know, uh, Ray's comments. I think, you know, planning commission is here to serve the community, so we are here to listen to both, you know, applicant and appellant. So at the same time, you know, uh, it's our duty to uphold the law, right? And, you know, if there is a justification for exception, you know, we could make an exception, but, you know, in this case, you know, we don't want, as Vikram said, you know, we don't want to open a can of forms. So, uh, I encourage, you know, neighbors to work with each other, to accommodate each other, uh, you know, get the project done. So, thank you.
Okay, um, okay, moving on. Um, does someone else want to speak here?
Yeah, I, I had my hand up.
Please be, please be brief, this item is.
Yeah, so I actually, uh, wanted to suggest, uh, that an amendment, uh, could be, or, uh, we can set the motion process to change the date, they change the start time in residential areas to seven thirty instead of seven. That might solve a lot of problems and as, uh, uh, Chair Sharf mentioned, uh, that would be something I would encourage us to consider.
Right, I think that's something, you know, the city council and the planning department would have to, uh, look at, um.
Yeah, so I was suggesting that we send a recommendation that we.
Okay, all right, yeah, that's not unreasonable, okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, we have no old business, we have no new business. Um, how about staffing commission reports? Does anyone have anything?
Um, I do have a couple of announcements, sorry if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, um, so the Public Works Department, uh, has asked me to let everybody know that there's an online survey to get community feedback on what, um, the community would like to see at the revitalized memorial park. Uh, it will be posted at the Engage Cupertino website, uh, that's, uh, W W W dot, uh, engagecupidino.org and that will be active until February twenty second. Um, so please, uh, feel free to take that survey and, and let your friends and neighbors know to take it as well. Uh, additionally, I believe there's an open house at the Cupertino Senior Center on Saturday, February fourth, uh, between ten AM and two PM. So please come out and check out what the senior center, um, uh, has to offer. Um, there's also webinar, uh, a virtual webinar on, uh, February ninth, um, at seven PM. Uh, registration is available on engagecupidino.org. I believe all of this is related to revitalization of Memorial Park. So, uh, please feel free to be engaged in that project. Um, additionally, I believe that, uh, beginning, um, uh, in March, um, that all the commission meetings will, uh, be, uh, in person and will be hybrid. So members of the public may actually attend the meeting either, um, in person or, uh, on Zoom. And so as a result, the planning commissioners will need to be trained for that hybrid environment, um, at community hall. And so, um, there will be an email sent to you from the video crew and we'll probably have to coordinate on, on how this training will happen. Uh, we'll try to hopefully do it with, um, two commi- two commissioners at a time, so that we, we don't run into any brown act issues. Or, uh, we'll, we'll coordinate that and that, we'll reach out to you for how to, uh, go about that.
Okay.
Um, and one more announcement that I wanted to add, the Planning Commissioners Academy is also, um, at the end of March. Those dates have been announced as well and so I did want to put in a plug for, uh, the commissioners that, um, stay on to, uh, please attend that or sign up for it and Sarah can help register with registration and.
And where, where will that be this year?
Um, let me search that up really quick.
Last year it was in San Ramon.
I believe this year, if I may, I believe it is in Garden Grove, I can confirm.
That's what I thought, somewhere in Southern California.
Oh, okay.
It's March twenty ninth to the thirty first in Garden Grove.
With, uh, Garden Grove, how far is that?
Far.
Uh, I would have.
I don't know where it is.
I, I believe it's in Southern California, but that's not as much as I know.
So there is a travel involved?
Correct, and, and Sarah can, um, help you, um, with that, coordinate on that. I just wanted to share the website.
Ah, Orange County.
It's, it's OC, it's, it's OC, it's like, uh.
Twenty nine to thirty.
Thirty first.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I went last year, it was extremely useful, especially, I think the best part was the presentation on CEQA, uh, which is extremely complex and, uh, very, was very useful. Um, okay, so now it's on to, do any commissioners have reports besides me? If you attended any other meeting?
I, I actually sent, uh, write-up for, uh, Smart City Initiative to P U to share it with, uh, uh, other commissioners.
That is forthcoming, an email on that, Commissioner Kapil.
Yeah, so I, I think, I, I don't want to take a meeting's time there, but it is a kind of a read-up. Uh, I just wrote the, um, major points related to, uh, planning of the Smart City Initiative and what, how it affects the different aspects of the city. Uh, so it, you might have a, you might have a look.
Okay, I believe this is, is this your last meeting?
Yes.
Well, thank you for your service, um, and I believe it's Commissioner Saxena's last meeting too, is that true?
Well, you could reapply, you guys could, you guys could reapply.
You're on mute, mute, whether.
You're, you're muted, Vikram.
It's the last meeting of the first term. I'm still eligible for a second term.
Oh, okay.
Uh, let's see how it goes.
So.
Okay, any other commissioner reports before I go?
I, I do, actually, um, I've been, uh, attending Cali meetings and following what's been going on, uh, at the state level. Uh, there's a lot of challenges, I, I think the public should know that, uh, there's a lot of challenges to the RENA numbers, uh, and to the way those numbers were calculated. Uh, there are probably pending lawsuits that are happening, uh, coming in that area. Uh, and second of all, I think it's, uh, also important for the general public to understand that, um, the League of Cities, which is supposed to represent, uh, local control, has not been doing their job and some cities are looking at pulling out and not paying their membership dues. Uh, I'll probably go to city council and, and make that recommendation, even though we are trying to go to Planning Commissioners Academy. Uh, I, I do understand the implications, but, uh, they are not representing our interests for local control and, and I think citizens should know that, so that's it, thanks. Uh I I do understand the implications, but uh they are not representing our interests for local control, and and I think citizens should know that. So, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, um so I will go. So um, yeah, I attended the Cali meetings on January fifteenth and twenty second. On the fifteenth, the president of the League of California Cities. Ali Sajad Taj, I hope I said that right, he was the guest uh on the call. And his big thing, he spoke about a ballot measure that's being uh put on the ballot by real estate developers, and they collected. They expected collected enough signatures um to make it on the twenty twenty four ballot. And this will make it more difficult for the cities and school districts. Um to pass pass fees and bond measures, to set impact fees at levels determined by the Nexus Studies. Um the League of Cities is going to oppose the ballot measure, of course. Uh but he also said it's important that member cities express their opposition. So hopefully um this will be discussed at Cupertino's Legislative Review Committee, where we can take the position. Also, Jason Rhimes of Cal Cities, I believe he's, I forget his title, legislative, policy, whatever. Um he said as, as a result of the projected state budget shortfall. There was gonna be five hundred million dollars for affordable housing funding from the state, and that's being cut back to two hundred million. Uh since it presently costs about a million to build one unit, um even at five hundred, it has almost no impact. Two hundred even less impact. Um so that that is not a good thing. And then finally, there's an effort being pushed by uh developer interests and some anti-affordable housing groups. To modify SB thirty five, and this would eliminate the requirement that the SB thirty five projects. Include a higher level of affordable housing um than a city would normally require, so. You know, if that got um changed, you know, in Cupertino, we'd be down to fifteen percent for rental and twenty percent for. Um for sale instead of the fifty percent that uh we're currently supposed to get over at the Vaca project. And, you know, that's it. Next month, Cali is gonna have some statewide elected leaders speaking at the weekly meetings and. Uh that should be very enlightening, and that that's all I had on that. Anybody else? Uh I, and now we are, if no one else.
So I I I I I'd like to ask you, Sanjeev, you know, is this a second term or is he not applying at all?
Oh, no, I have applied. Yeah, yeah, but uh uh, yeah, but do read the Smart City Initiative paper I wrote.
Okay, thank you.
Respective of that, I am there or not.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we we haven't received them yet, so we hope to.
Okay, anyway, now we are on to future agenda settings. So does anyone have? Anything they would like to see on the future agendas? Mr. Wong?
On on behalf of Commissioner Saxena, I would love to see the school study. That he joined this commission starting out with, uh as as your first initiative, actually be something that comes to fruition. Uh and and I'm still um, I'm I'm still looking and hoping to see one day a report as to when these cell towers. And what we're doing about cell tower construction is going to be, so. Um I understand there's jurisdictional issues and uh but that's that's, we should still at least get a report and study session on that issue, so that that's it on my end.
Okay, uh Commissioner Saxena, you still have your hand raised? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to uh uh talk about Ray's thing. So I guess I I would recommend that, at least my studies suggest that. Uh for ownership housing uh and how it encourages a greater turnover, improves the tax base. And also has a lower school generation ratio than apartments.
Okay, yeah, right now we're, right now.
Yeah, so so we would, if if we can do that, that'd be great.
I I tried to do that in this meeting and I was told I could not. Um so.
What? Okay.
Yes, um. Uh I don't wanna say anymore about that here. Uh. Okay, anything else for future agendas? Uh speak now or whoever holds your.
Sure, I I do wanna have a, I do want to uh, what is the process to getting a item onto the agenda? So, given that um, you know, if we wanted to hold our own study session, you're telling us that we're not able to do that, Chair?
Um, Michael, why don't you speak to this?
Sure, um Commissioner Wong, the Commissioner's handbook provides that two commissioners can. Together request an item based on a future agenda. After that occurs, then. Um the staff liaison and the chair and myself discuss uh that request and that item and. And among other things, we have to determine whether it's something that's within the jurisdiction of this particular planning commission. Uh and, you know, if it is, then we schedule the item uh as appropriate, given um. Uh the, you know, any hearings or any other things that uh that may come up. But if if it doesn't appear that it's related to something within the jurisdiction of this planning commission, then unfortunately, we wouldn't be putting it on.
Okay, so so a research study to understand how funding implements the way we set zoning for. You know, how funding levels affect, well, how zoning changes and how funding levels for schools affect our. You know, tax collection i- is, it would not be something that would fit within planning?
Um I would need to think about it a little more carefully, Commissioner Wong, but, you know, since, uh, you know, so but, you know, I mean. I I I don't know whether the city has control over funding issues with um, you know, the school. And certainly, they're they're charged of how housing impacts uh uh school patterns, and certainly within the ambit. Of the school district. So there's no doubt there. The connection between what we do at the planning commission and the city, that's a little bit different, so. I would like to look at that a little bit further.
Okay, I respect that. I'm just, I I think, you know, because if we zone certain way. Or if we make requirements for for-sale housing versus rental homes, right, it does have impact to the community. And also does impact to how we zone, and and that would be uh, that would be my appeal for uh what Commissioner Saxena is asking for. But I'll take this at a different point in time when it's more germane, uh but I appreciate your response.
Hey, Commissioner Saxena, did you have something else to say before?
Yeah, I uh just wanted to make sure the scope of what we were asking was clear to um to Mr. Wu. Uh I think the kind of zoning and whether we have for-sale or for-rent housing is completely under the jurisdiction of the planning commission. And as we look at other impacts like traffic or environment or sequer. How it impacts uh the taxpayers for the schools is a key component, because uh we know in Cupertino, um. It's spite of being like the tenth or the eleventh most wealthiest city in the world, we had some of the lowest funding for schools.
Yeah, you know, I think we're discussing an item not on the agenda now, so we really.
I just wanted to clarify to what Mr. Wu said, that how planning impacts that.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, yeah, Mike, I really need to have a meeting with you about this. Um and maybe with Chris. Okay, and Sarah, what did you have? Do you have something?
I I did, thank you. I saw that a member of the public had their hand raised, but it is now lowered. Um I just wanted to make sure that someone caught that before we closed the meeting.
Yeah, I for, I I forgot that for future agenda items, we do um. Yeah, a member of the public could could speak on that. Let me, let me go back over there and uh.
You know, Chair, I I if it's we need discretion to allow it, but I I just don't think that's accurate because it's.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, thank you, Michael. Um. Okay, so seeing nothing else. Uh I think we are ready to adjourn. So thank you, everybody, and uh we'll see you uh. Um March fourteenth or whenever our next meeting.
Happy Lunar here. Well said there.